Secondary here, we've got Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wise, I teach second grade English at Kenneth Henderson. And we actually wound up evaluating four curriculums instead of three. We had it narrowed down to our top three and then towards the end, we found out that the high school was looking at Springboard and they'd had a very, very strong presentation. And Springboard had recently introduced a middle school component. And so we wanted to go ahead and look at that as well, just to see if that would make that transition easier. And because they had presented so well at the high school, we said, let's not overlook that. So that's why we wound up with four instead of three. It looked at EL education, Springboard, Wit and Wisdom, and my perspectives, which is through Pearson. Uh, EL education, uh, same percentages, meaning the same, each category, it tells you at what percentage we felt that curriculum met that criteria. EL education, we only found it to be thirty-seven percent effective in meeting all of it overall. And EL was all online, there was no tangible piece to it, uh, which would be a big difference for us. But it was a determining factor, we were looking mostly at organization, content, alignment. Springboard scored much stronger than EL. Uh, overall, we found it to be meeting our standards seventy-six percent. It seemed like a very strong curriculum. Uh, one of the things you'll see later on though is because it was new, it didn't have all the backgrounds necessarily that there's on the ed reports, there's areas, there's no score. Or it was yellow because it just hasn't been around long enough to strengthen it. But it was a very, very strong component, it was probably one of our second choices.
I have a question on that one, because it seemed like the inclusion really brings that score down. Can you tell me exactly what inclusion means? They had it on the last one too, and I was gonna ask.
Trying to remember, on the rubric, I had it all lined out, but trying to remember what the rubric says.
I think it was that, um, inclusion for the special programs that we have.
Our ELL and special education, having extra things addressed, and that's exactly what that was. And have extra resources and breakdown for our different needs. Wit and Wisdom again, was not very strong overall, it came to thirty-four percentage at meeting it. Um, it was mostly online, they had a tangible piece, but it was something that you would, it really looked very much like a Z Rock's copy, um, which was difficult for us, just as a visibility to try and convince the kids. It's hard enough to get them into text, but when you try and convince them to get into something that looks like just straight text, it was, it was a hard sell. As we looked at it, meeting our content standards and the inclusion possibilities and the alignment, it just didn't come across as very strong. And that brings us to my perspectives. It came across much stronger. Um, one of the really neat things about my perspectives was that both schools, teachers from both schools were a hundred percent on board. They, they really liked, Pearson did an excellent job of having a consumable product that the students can annotate on, they can mark on, they could read, it had interactive things, which as a reading teacher, it's incredibly important for them to be able to get in there and mark it up. And so we're excited about that, but it also had a very strong digital component. They have incredible, the authors of my perspective were, um, like Kelly Gallagher is one of them, I can't think of the others, but very big names in ELA education. Um, people that we've done book studies on, we've been using their material for years. One of the things that excited our friends at Horace Good the most is part of the, um, training on the book, they said could include bringing some of those authors out here to work with us. So getting Kelly Gallagher out here to Garden City. Um, so, but yeah, we are very, very excited about that. It, it had an amazing ability at differentiation without it isolating students. One of the setups it has is a whole group, and then small group, and then independent. And independent had several different selective readings where the students could pick. Still hit the same standards, but choose things that were on their interest level, that were closer on their reading level, um, and have questions and activities that were all aligned with all of these activities, all of these stories. So it's not, everybody reads the same thing all the time, they, they had some other interests. And that, that struck a chord with us, because again, getting by in with the students helps with getting them on board with assignments. When we looked at ed reports on text quality, all of them were green across the board on all of them. On building knowledge, Springboard was in the yellow, but again, it was just barely, and this was their, just introduced their middle school. They've been primarily geared towards high school up to this point, so I think that'll strengthen. And the same thing with usability, they just haven't been scored yet on that, because it hasn't been out very long. And so obviously with those numbers, we are recommending my perspectives. Uh, it had a hundred percent support from both schools. The teachers from both schools are very excited about that. Our current textbook was adopted before Common Course Singers came out. And so our curriculum has been, for several years, teachers trying to develop, trying to find materials that were on the new rigor and relevance categories. And so teachers are all over the place, so we're very excited to get a curriculum aligned between the two schools, have some consistency there between all seventh and eighth graders. So we're hoping that my perspectives will help us do that. Any questions about these?
Board questions? The, what's a ten day PD package?
Okay, so it did come with an additional charge for ten days of professional development. Um, the textbook committee very much is in favor of that. And that professional development, like I said, could include having the authors come out here. It is extensive, their online component is incredibly in-depth and has so many possibilities. And one of the things that we've seen in the past is, we adopt a new textbook or new curriculum and it's got all sorts of resources, but you're just overwhelmed and so you wind up never using, never using it to its potential. And so we'd really like to get that additional professional development, so they can kind of guide us through that, so we can not just be, oh, here's your new curriculum in August, go, and then we only wind up using ten percent of it. That needs repeated exposure and saying, okay, now we're gonna learn how to use this component and how it fits this piece. So that, that was an additional thirty thousand, but we're, we are requesting that because we do think that will make us use it much more effectively.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have high school, and we have Wendy Chertre here.
Hi, I'm Wendy Chertre, and I do teach at the high school. And I just wanna say thank you for letting us be part of this process, 'cause we've somehow elected not to be part of the process for the last two textbook adoptions. So our textbook is from two thousand and two. And so I'm super excited just to get something new. But we, we narrowed our choices down to Bedford Freeman and Wirth's, Springboard and Collections, which is, um, the company, well, there's been a lot of mergers since two thousand and two, but that's kind of the company that our book would have come from, that we have right now. So with Bedford Freeman and Wirth's, um, the overall percentage was about seventy-four. I think a majority of the teachers were really worried about the inclusion part because of our high ESL population. And, um, they, they directed a lot of their material towards AP students and honor students. And so they, um, didn't necessarily bring in a lot of the, um, ways that we can help struggling learners or ESL population. And then Springboard scored very well with everything. And Springboard actually is the company who produces the AP tests. And so it's, it's interesting that, you know, the other one, Bedford Freeman and Wirth's, who gears theirs towards AP doesn't actually, they are not part of the writing of that AP test. But yet, Springboard is, and they do include those skills and everything that would help a struggling reader and our ESL population. And so they scored a hundred percent across the board. And then Collections was kind of our, um, well, we wanted to really see how our textbook that we have currently has adapted to everything that has changed. And it scored very well. And I think one of the biggest components is, um, of this particular collection is the online portion. It, um, they actually partnered with history.com and A and E. And so they have some of those components in there built in, where you can get those, um, online help from those companies. However, um, when we look at Collections on ed report, the text quality is a little bit in the yellow, though it's not extremely low, it's at twenty-seven and, and twenty-five, but it's, um, red when you get to the building knowledge. And that really sent up some red flags, no pun intended. But the idea that if it's not building that, that background knowledge, then something's missing. The, the online piece is awesome and it looks, you know, wonderful as far as ability to use that. But if it's not going to help our students and build the background knowledge, then it's not gonna benefit them. Um, and then for the usability, it was not rated. And so that's what eventually, um, had us choose to, between them and Springboard. And so that's what we are recommending, that we have the possibility to purchase a Springboard. And, um, Springboard, we, we did have some teachers who were concerned with, um, you know, if this was a company who actually helps write the AP tests, will they have that, um, ability to help our ELL and our struggling readers? And they did provide some background information on the fact that they, they will be able to support our struggling readers and our ESL population. Um, and in talking with Renee Stott, she, she also said that being in the classroom, it's, and I can agree, it is, it's so much easier to take something that's maybe really high and to pare it down. It's very hard to take something that's, that's mainstream and to build on that if you don't have the, the background or the ability to do that. And sometimes we, um, we, we need that support, we need to see that scaffolding. And so Springboard provided that information for us. And they also did have some professional development that we were excited to have them kind of do that. Do you have any questions for them?
Any questions on high school?
Is there a cost to that professional development? Do you have an amount there?
I think that is included in that price quote, but I'll have to get more specifics on. Many of the core, um, price quotes had like two or three days of professional development. Then you could add on a package. And I don't remember what Springboard offered as an add-on, though we are currently in contact with them, working through the process.
I would highly suggest the add-ons, just because of the turnover that we have. And, and so, you know, if we, if we have that support coming in, we would always be able to help our, our new teachers for a time, obviously, but it would just help out a little bit.
Other questions?
So this is our final slide, and this is summarizing the recommendations the committee and ELA teachers have for each, um, grade level. So Garfield is recommending, we've heard, the collect for learning. Elementary school, kindergarten through fifth grade, has benchmarked advanced recommendation. The intermediate centers and middle schools, sixth through eighth grade, they are recommending my perspectives. And high school is recommending Springboard.
Okay. Are we active on this? So, um, good question, so if we're not asking you to add-ons tonight, we will bring it back. Probably the recommendation on the seventh agenda at the next meeting unless there's questions that come up. We, we would like to move forward next time because there's probably some pricing advantages that we can get if we make these decisions before the first of the year. The other part of this, I really wanna compliment Monica and the committee for their work, but, um, by making this decision and getting things ordered, we'll have time this spring to get materials in, begin doing that professional development with teachers. So teachers don't leave for the summer and come back to school and all of a sudden, here's all this new material, and now they're scrambling to start their school year. So, um, we'll be able to use some of our professional development time during, uh, during the spring, voting it is, and probably do some stuff through the summer as well. So, um, so we got a little bit of time, but that's kind of what our plan is.
Would that also allow for, you're gonna have to adapt a little bit for the fifth and sixth grade centers, since it breaks right there, uh, there'll be some kind of collaboration there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on some stuff, we're experts in that, so. Um, I really wanna thank Monica, this is a huge amount of work. And, um, if you remember last year, we kinda, I kinda slowed them down a little bit, because as you can see, it's a significant investment. This is probably one of the biggest investments that we've made. And it certainly is our biggest in terms of our textbook adoption cycle. So we save up for this and, and it's extremely important. So we wanted to make sure that we were not rushing things, that we understood what we were trying to do with literacy instruction, um, and not just replace, I heard several of the teachers comment that, you know, we just didn't wanna replace what we had, because it was the newest, latest, greatest. We wanted to really make sure that the curriculum that we selected was gonna, gonna be best for our students. So also wanna thank them for tons and tons of, of hours of work and, and, and thank Dr. Henning for his work with the curriculum committee and, and the curriculum council. Take the time to go and be part of that, see the work that's done, because there you've got, I don't know, what do you have, thirty in that meeting, um, individuals that, they're the ones that have rolled up their sleeves and dug into this, these are the, the experts. And, and so for him to be able to see that firsthand, um, taking time away. And certainly appreciate when board members have time to do that, involve our committees. Um, I think that's powerful, a powerful takeaway. So, um, we, if you have questions, we'll get them to the right people over the next few weeks and then we'll bring it back for the next meeting.
So the only question I wasn't able to ask is, did any of the prices for the programs they chose were outside of your expectations for, um, what we'd be spending on this?
I think I've been planning anywhere from one point five to two million dollars. Just some of the buildings, and then come back and weigh all the pros and cons. I'm sure they'd like to have all the bells and whistles, but still narrow it down.
I think we'll track them, how much each of these companies were.
We're, we're in the ballpark.
We're in the ballpark.
Yeah.
And we will, between now and then, we will be contacting those companies and getting more specific, and trying to negotiate the best price we can give. I just noted that they didn't necessarily choose the cheapest, but, um, they didn't necessarily choose the lowest of the two. Kind of noted that was real important. You say that the money's in the, in the budget, so, um, so this is first read, and we'll come back and revisit it again, a long process, a very important process. And a little bit surprised to hear maybe we haven't had any curriculum, at least at one level, since two thousand and two. So, uh...
This one is more than ten years old.
Yes. And we try to do that every seven years, I think, so, um, there's a lot there, a lot of work and maybe a lot of excitement to get going on this too, I hope so. Thank you very much for the presentation, and we'll revisit this in a minute.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments to Dr. Garland. On, on those proposals that come back to us, especially on the professional development, the one that was the ten day professional development costs thirty thousand. I'm assuming that's a company's cost, but I'd really, I'd really like to see the numbers of what the company's gonna charge us and what it's gonna cost for those teachers to be in. Because there's a cost, a ten day professional development, we pay the teachers. So I'd really like to look at those numbers on the professional development, too. Couple of said, they feel that they need that, and outstanding textbooks. But we also need to watch that, that bottom line, and I wanna make sure that my vote isn't approving when I put, and we're gonna do the professional development, unless I know the actual cost of professional development. I'm sure you can get that. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
And I do wanna point out on the middle school, on that one that had the ten extra days professional development, what we did, with that thirty thousand, it was still the cheapest of the four textbooks. We weren't looking at price, we were just looking at the content and how well aligned it did. So we were really excited, but our favorite choice was the lowest one of the four options, so.
I saw that.
It's exciting to do.
Thank you so much for all your work, a member of the team, and I can't say enough about that. And thanks for being here tonight, so, on a snow day evening. That dedication over there down there. Okay, Garden City High School eligibility policy report, that's in half two. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here on this.
Um, yeah, we were asked, Dr. Cron talked to us and asked us to come in and kind of, uh, break down for you the process that we used in revamping our eligibility, um, policy for activities as well as athletics. That went into this last spring student handbook. For me, the conversation about streamlining our eligibility policies started in two thousand and twelve. It's been a while, we've been talking about this for quite a while at the high school. Uh, that was when I started as an associate principal at the high school. Uh, and my, my charge was the associate principal in charge of arts and communication, which is where a lot of our student activities, as far as our performing arts, visual arts, uh, are located. And, uh, discussions were, these discussions were initiated by faculty members who were sponsors of our programs. And there were some discussions about, you know, the issues that arose of having two separate eligibility policies, some for students in athletics, and then a differing policy when it came to students who were involved in clubs and activities and other things that still represent Garden City High School. And there were some concerns with some of the sponsors, some of the faculties and that, faculty in that department, that we were kind of sending a message that we cared about the, the academic progress of the kids that were involved in sports, but we didn't really care about the academic progress of the kids that were involved in activities. And we all created two completely separate policies. And so, the questions and the concerns basically went down to, boiled down to consistency, for the most part. With a policy which had a, a, the policy of one failing grade allowable for kids that were in athletics or anything sponsored by CACIA. And then a policy that, well, there was no policy concerned with kids that weren't involved in something that was CACIA, but still represented our, our high school. It was, it provided a lot of inconsistencies, especially for kids that were involved in multiple programs with different policies. We may have a student who's involved in, in choir and volleyball, and carried a heavier, I guess, academic burden for being involved in volleyball than being involved in choir, yet they were both representing Garden City High School. And that was confusing for the kids, uh, confusing for parents. Talking to them, uh, when a student had problems with eligibility, how come my kid can perform in this, but can't perform in this? They're both representing Garden City High School. Then, also for the teachers and the sponsors of some of these programs, the inconsistency. Drew and I could be teachers without, he, he's sponsoring an athletic event or a CACIA event, and me being a sponsor of something that wasn't CACIA, in many circumstances, we had a student who could not perform in a CACIA activity, but could go hop on a bus and leave with me and, and leave town and miss class, even though there's failing three classes, four classes, and we've had that. And so that was creating conflicts for sponsors and a conflicting message from us. And then the consistency within the program. Many of our fine arts activities especially are governed by CACIA for some of their activities. Others, they aren't. So even within a program, talking to a parent, how come my student can perform at a concert on Thursday, but can't go get on a bus with the band on Saturday and go do the same thing? Well, Thursday's event was a school event, and Thursday, Saturday's event was a state event. So there's two different eligibility policies. And that was pretty hard, I mean, it was, created a lot of inconsistencies, a lot of tough conversations, and a lot of conflicts. And then again, uh, in addition to the consistency, the idea of the academic performance. We started noticing the failing lists for students involved. And some of our activities were quite large in comparison with the kids that were involved in sports, in CACIA activities. And, you know, they're all good kids. The only difference we could see is, one, we held a stand, we, one, we held to a standard as a school, and the other one, we didn't. So that was a concern also. So, a timeline, starting in two thousand and twelve, I can go back that far because that's my, that's, that's my experience with it. Uh, as the associate principal in terms of arts and com, in charge of arts and com, I spent two years working with the staff, taking a look. I had to be educated on really what the issues were at the start. I was coming into the building new, I didn't, didn't know the history or some of the, some of the conflicts. Then upon coming head principal in two thousand and fifteen, uh, we wanted to study and see, we can't be the only school with this situation in the state of Kansas. Uh, there've gotta be other schools that have addressed this situation already, let's learn from them. Uh, and, you know, with Drew coming on, a couple of years ago, he's in his third year now, he really got out, started talking to other, uh, activities directors and other folks from around the state, trying to figure out what's done in different places. Uh, we started discussing implementation of one consistent policy throughout our school with club sponsors, with activity sponsors, some of which visited with us when we talked to them and said, you know what, you're right. And installed their own eligibility policy. They unilaterally said, you know what, we ought to, I ought to follow the CACIA policy for my kids too. You're right, they're leaving the school, they're representing Garden City High School, they're leaving class, yeah, they should be under that. Uh, and we also started studying our academic data, especially when it came to grade point averages. How did kids who were in these programs perform compared to kids in the general student population and compared to kids in athletics, where we had different standards? So we started doing all that studying leading up to two thousand and seventeen. And then, at the beginning of last school year, so last fall of two thousand and seventeen, we introduced to our activity sponsors the desire to implement one standard eligibility policy throughout our school. We talked about how it would be implemented, we talked a lot about potential impact, how this would look for their programs. We studied the, we submitted the policy change to the handbook in the spring. And then over the summer, I also individually met with the impacted department leaders and sponsors to talk again about how this would be implemented through the fall. With, with particular attention to our people that were already partially under CACIA, but partially not, band, choir, orchestra, theater, they all have summer camps, they're up there all summer long. So I just invited those heads of the departments, come in and see me, come talk to me, let's talk about how this is all gonna happen. So in doing that, here was, here the...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I was looking for some point where you engage, um, the teachers in this. Did you make a sort of effort to ask teachers?
To ask the, the faculty as a whole? No, we, we didn't ask the faculty as a whole, we asked the sponsors of the programs, yeah. Here were the policy...
Are you, is this layout the difference between CACIA and the, and the Garden City High School policy?
Well...
Is that where you're going?
Well, what I was going to, no, what I'm gonna say, what I was gonna say is just kind of what the policy entails as we put it together. But the, but the CACIA policy is essentially, if you pass five classes the semester before, you're good. It doesn't matter what your grades are during the current semester that you're competing.
So how can that be confusing with what we're doing at the high school? Because the high school is very different.
For K, yeah, for the, the high school is different for that, for some of our activities. We had a policy for CACIA things only that required them to pass all but one course. We had a policy more stringent than the minimum requirement of CACIA. For only those CACIA activities, yeah.
Because I can see where you just adopt the CACIA standard and then, and then work around it. If you, consistency is the overriding thing, then take the minimum, be consistent. And then, because consistency for consistency's sake suggests all high school students aren't the same, which I don't believe that that's true. So I've certainly got an ear for how you're addressing that.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, we, we've always had policies that went above the minimum for CACIA, but only for the kids that were involved in... for the kids that were involved in activities governed by CACIA. So a robotics team, for instance, would not have been under that.
All interjector. Only lately, we've excluded. Prior, when Bill Weatherly was the athletic director and prior to that, this same policy applied to everybody in school. When Martin Segovia took over, the policy got reduced to only CACIA activities. So it used to be everybody, then it got reduced, and then my predecessor Jared started talking about it.
Yeah. And that's, and so that's kind of how we got there. We had a policy that applied to everybody and we went away from it and it caused a lot of confusion. And so we wanted to go back to a policy that had some teeth to it because we saw that there was a discrepancy in the academic performance as far as GPAs measured and number of kids on the failing list.
Because one of the biggest concerns is in your bullet point there. It's not in CACIA, but weekly eligibility brings in all kinds of issues from the timeliness of the teacher, getting things graded, to the performance of the student in classes that have nothing to do with what they're now being told they need to do. And so I appreciate you addressing that.
Yeah, yeah. So here's the policy as in the handbook. Student must meet eligibility requirements to represent Garden City High School in any activity which involves intraschool, local or competition or school representation before group. Meaning if they're going to leave class and perform and say, we are Garden City High School, that they at least meet minimum eligibility requirements of passing six out of seven classes or seven out of eight if they have a zero out. Weekly eligibility requires students to be passing all but one class that he or she is currently enrolled in. Eligibility reports will be conducted weekly and reported to activity sponsors and coaches. All participants in activities in athletics, of course, must adhere to attendance policy. That's also part of our student in good standing. A student must be in good standing to be eligible to participate in activities and athletics. Generally, that means you're meeting the eligibility policy for grades, attendance, but also discipline. Each student is given one grace week per season, fall, winter, and spring. So that one bad performance on a test or something like that happens once and, oh, I got nailed, I didn't turn this in. We give them a grace period. We give them a grace week to be able to perform and still do what they're doing. We don't want to, we don't want to catch some kid in a situation that's not their doing. And study hall is available. We have tutoring available four days a week now. Four days a week after school with teachers on hand to help any kid in any kind of academic difficulty, involved in activities or not. But we have set that up for them. What's happened, at least just one nine weeks in, eligibility lists for activities have been greatly reduced. You know, we're cutting pages off of our eligibility report by putting some of the activities that didn't have an academic standard and applying an academic standard to them. And that has been a benefit, of course, for kids, but also for sponsors. They don't have to try to track down some of these kids, they're taking care of it themselves. They know that they've got a standard on them now and they're meeting the standard. They really are meeting the standards that we're setting for them. I visited with each of the coaches, our sponsors, at least down in our fine arts hallway, and they have all reported that concerts really haven't been impacted. Choir, orchestra, jazz bands, concert season has happened. We've had two plays and each one, each sponsor that has come to sit in my office has said, yeah, kids have met, you set the bar, kids have met the bar. And it has helped in at least one way recently. For some of our performing arts groups, they had to make the transition this last week from no eligibility to a CACIA-sponsored sport that required activity contest, district honor choir, district honor jazz, district honor orchestra. All of a sudden you had an eligibility policy from the state on you. They found the transition was easier. Their kids were already meeting the standard. They didn't have to worry about whether that kid was going to fail a class or two. They've been monitoring that kid all nine weeks and they knew. They knew where they were standing and students knew they had to keep their grades up to be eligible. And it made that transition into their state, I guess you could say, season, pretty smoothly for them. So, you know, we're seeing that our, like I said, our eligibility lists are much, much cleaner than we had before. And, you know, where we've got 137 students in choir and there was virtually no impact on the choir concert. Kids met the standard, they go. We've had, like I said, jazz band, we've had jazz one, jazz two, jazz three. Not one student was kept from playing because of eligibility. So we couldn't have said that if we'd applied the same standard all of a sudden last year when we really didn't have this going for the whole time. So it's been, it's one nine weeks in, but as I said, the results have been good. Kids have met the standard.
So all we have to do is set higher bars and we'll have higher achievement?
Well, that's not all we have to do, but I think it does, at least so far, seem to have an impact. You know, the, I can tell you that a concern last year, when we did our eligibility last fall and we really started talking about this, we, Coach Tone ranked all of the activities and athletics by their GPAs for the fall, and there was only one activity that was in the top half of the group. All the rest of the activities were in the bottom half of the group. And we can't say that this nine weeks. And I'm glad we can't say that right now. They're moving, they're moving towards the top and that's a good thing. And it's one nine weeks in. I realize it's early, but early results have been good. Have kids needed the grace period? Yes. But that's why it's in there. That's why it's in there. So we don't want to, we don't want to catch somebody and hammer. For me, I'm thinking there's, we produce great kids in theater and band, choir, orchestra, debate forensics and robotics and all these things that they can earn scholarships for. Are we doing any good if we get them that scholarship and they can't take advantage of it because they don't have the academic background to accept it, to make it pay off? And they're back for college in a year. And I want them to be, I want them to be successful. I want to make sure that we've got that academic background as well as the talent that I know that our sponsors can get out of our kids. Any of you that went to the play this last weekend, you can testify to that. We've got some uberly talented kids led by some dedicated adults.